Good evening. Want to call a meeting to order at 6:30 on July 1st, City Commission Meeting. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation by Commissioner David Merker, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag by Commissioner Michael Fitzpatrick, if you please rise.
Independence Day, commonly known as the Fourth of July, is a federal holiday in the United States commemorating the adoption of the Declaration of Independence on July 4th, 1776, declaring independence from the Kingdom of Great Britain. Independence Day is commonly associated with fireworks, parades, barbecues, carnivals, fairs, picnics, baseball, and of course, political speeches. So here comes my talk. Freedom's price. Today we celebrate freedom, thanks to those who came before, those brave men who fought and died in each and every war. Freedom always comes at a price, and while we celebrate, we should remember to tip our hats to the heroes who made our country great. God bless America.
I pledge allegiance and sincere flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here. Okay, thank you, Madam Coram. We'll go to agenda approval, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. I have two items I'd like to ask, under administrative, A, where we make appointments of boards, I'd like to add on to the very bottom of that. I want to introduce the Mental Health Committee that has been chosen for the Commission's approval of those selections. So if you could add that on the bottom there. And then, under consent agenda, I would like to pull item D, as we have someone in the audience who'd like to speak to that. Yes?
I'd like to pull under administrative, B, I'm sorry, B.
B, okay.
Yes, like to talk about that. Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. I have a motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
All aye, all opposed, so the motion is unanimous. Informational items by the Commission, I'll start with Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
All right. It's kind of a, since the last Commission meeting, I attended the June 19th Metropolitan Planning Organization, which has turned out to be about a four-hour meeting, and then in the afternoon came to the Boynton Beach Strategic Planning. June 21st, I attended a Fire Department Retirement Dinner, and June 22nd, I attended a Fire Department Retirement Picnic. I've been kind of following about the January incident where there was a lot of flooding, and I, some comments at that time, I made some wrong assumptions, and since then I've talked to Patrick Martin, who is a civil engineer for Lake Worth Drainage District, and I was under the impression that they would try to delay the flow because once water has damaged something, if it's been there 20 minutes or four hours, there isn't much increase in damage to a person, so that they would try to prevent damage to their system. And what happens if there's, if water, he told me if water starts moving greater than two and a half to three feet per second, which is basically 1,1,000, if water moves faster than that, it starts scouring, tears up the, moves the sand, tears up the bank. But he says it's less detrimental to the Lake Worth Drainage District, the political fallout of looking, kind of looking like incompetence, so they opened everything up. So there was nothing closed during that incident, and since then, they've had to repair hundreds of washouts, which took several months to repair, but that's preferable rather than having water staying around. So they weren't trying to, there was nothing held back. And I was concerned that maybe some of the bridge structures, if water moved too fast, would be damaged, but he says that's not accurate, that all the bridge structures are designed for hurricanes, and you know, floating stuff, trees floating down and stuff like that, so that wasn't a concern either. And I wondered about how much water can actually move out of the system, because there's only one outlet to the intercoastal in Boynton, that's at the C-16 Canal, which is north of Martin Luther King Boulevard on Federal Highway to Structure 41, which is the levee. And I talked to Susan Sylvester, who is Chief of Operations Maintenance Construction Division of the South Florida Water Management District, and she says that at five feet headwater can discharge 3,570 cubic feet per second, CFS. Now, if you translate that into gallons, unless I did my math wrong, it's 100 million gallons of water per hour. So to give it in comparison, the sewage plant that covers Boynton and Delray, the South Central Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant, only averages 17 million gallons per day. So basically, it could, that spillway could handle the, what they do in 10 minutes. So the water was moving as fast as possible, but the problem is, if you think, if you turn on the hose and watch water trickle down in your yard, how fast is it moving, four or five miles an hour, and how far are you from that spillway? And that's why the water backed up, because if it's moving at four or five miles an hour, it may take over an hour to get to the spillway, and that's why the water backed up, not because Lake Worth Drainage District had anything closed. Another issue is in my daily, or, I mean, daily, no way, weekly meetings with the city manager.
Don't you enjoy those meetings?
We're discussing the budget, and it came up that the mileage rate, she's planning for the budget is 7.9. Last year it was 7.8, and we added a tenth for reserves and special capital expenditures, and we don't have an option to talk to each other up here, so just, I'm just letting it know, and that I would prefer, my thought now is to keep it at 7.8, so that anything above that can reserve for capital expenditures in the future, such as financing a new police station, or City Hall, or something like that. That's just my personal opinion right now. Could change by July 21st, but I'm just throwing it out there for you guys to think about.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Casello.
Yes, thank you. First of all, Happy Canada Day. Today, July 1st, is like the Fourth of July up there in Canada, being married to a Canadian, I know all about it. Also, starting July 7th, just for your information out there, if you don't have noticed the signs, our City Hall, the hours of operation are going to be from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. So that's something to, I'm excited about that, see our City Hall open. I also have a request for a future agenda item, Mr. Mayor, and it's the, as the support's starting to rise for years on Amendment 2, medical marijuana legalization, it's looking, it's going to become a reality here in Florida. And I think it's time to take a, maybe a proactive approach towards passing, or looking at ordinances for these, for the green industry that's coming. And I believe we should be ahead of the curve on this issue, and would like to put it on a upcoming agenda for discussion.
I would agree with you tremendously, we'll ask City Mayor to add that to an agenda coming up soon, because we need to be above the curve on that. It sounds like it's going to go to referendum in November, and it sounds, at this point, that will pass, and so we need to know if the state tells us we've got to do that, we need to have planned on how we're going to approach that. So we'll ask our planning and zoning to look at that and bring us back some information.
I appreciate that.
Be great.
Also, a few of the events that I attended, on the 19th, most of us, all of us, attended the strategic planning that was held at the library. On the 21st, with the Boynton Beach Fire Department Retirement Banquet, held at the Intercoastal Clubhouse, where we gave, acknowledged some of our most valued employees who've put their time and service in, and are now on to bigger and better things. The 22nd, the Boynton Beach Fire Department had their picnic at the Intercoastal, it's always a good time for hamburgers and hot dogs, and mingle with the crowd. The 24th, we went to the, I went to a ribbon cutting at the Smoke Inn, it's located at 1030 Gateway. If you're aficionado of fine cigars and good scotch, I recommend that place highly. I've spent a few Saturday afternoons there myself. The 26th, I went to a candidate's forum held by the Cobra, our neighbors to our west, for school board districts 3 and 4, and judged candidates for circuit court judges, group 14 and 30, and was very knowledgeable to see who's interested. My hat's off to all candidates who put their hat in their ring to sit up here and do the things that we do. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, point of clarification, when you said the marijuana issue, you said it's going to be referred to by planning and zoning, was that a mistake, or what does planning and zoning have to do with this marijuana issue?
Well, building, building and zoning, they're going to look at what would require for a business license, stuff like that. If somebody opens that kind of a business, I need them to take a look at what's going to be required from the city, for permits and stuff. Commissioner Merker?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. I have three issues, yours truly, dealing with the legalization of marijuana. I made a lot of calls. I'm a New Jersey guy originally, I'm living in Florida now almost four years, and up north, I had the privilege of also holding office. So I called several hospitals, both in New Jersey and New York, let alone Bethesda down here, to get the doctor's opinion, the hospital's opinion, on whether or not they're in favor of legalizing marijuana. Now, please understand, obviously, I didn't speak to everybody, and I didn't speak to every department head, but because of people I knew from the past, I call them in the world of medicine. And personally speaking, I'll say it right now, ahead of time, because I think you know I'm not afraid to say yes or no, I am in favor of the legalization of this. It has to be controlled carefully, like everything else, but it's important, and if it could help a human being live longer, I'm totally in favor of it. Number two, it's in August, and it's around the corner, something else that's extremely important for all of us, those who have children, those who have grandchildren, the school board elections. Many of us, our children may be up north, or Midwest, or out West, but the heart and soul of this country as far as moving forward in education is to vote. In August, the election will be August 26th, for the school board election. I hope you listen to all the candidates, I personally have. I'm in favor of Justin Katz, who happens to be also a teacher. The issue that people should also be learning, which is very, very important to your children, grandchildren, not just in this area, but all over, the issue of charter schools versus public schools. And know it before you say yes or no. And lastly, I had the privilege and the fun of also being at the fireman's barbecue, and they have a way about them, the firemen, just to make it a lot of fun, and I had a very good time, and I thank everyone for the invitation.
Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, sir. I'll be very, very brief. I attended a strategic planning session, which I arrived late because I had to work that day because I had a funeral engagement, but also met with something that's very, very important, that I met with all aboard Florida, to discuss the pros and cons of that train coming within our city. We discussed the quiet zones in District 2, that's one of my concerns. I'm also concerned about the railroad crossing, that's all I did, I'm just saying, I had no fun and frivolity as I went around doing city business. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few things here. I also attended this strategic planning thing on June 19th, which was a Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Went very well, we got a lot of issues out on the table. On June 20th, Friday, the Children's Museum, I want to compliment the staff of the Children's Museum, they got the Palm Beach Pops to do a week-long musical education for children through the museum, and on that Friday, it was the finale, and they did a 45-minute concert at the library, and the people, the mothers and children, the fathers were there, and they had the kids, they taught them what the different instruments, what they meant, they played music, the kids danced to every song, they actually taught them how to lead the band and stuff, they brought the kids up and taught them how to do that. It was very educational, and I just think it was super that they were able to get the Palm Beach Pops to come in here and conduct that program for our kids. So just another great event that the Children's Museum is doing. Hope they can continue that. Also on that Friday, I did have lunch with Tom Sutterfield, who's also a candidate for the school board to represent Boynton Beach. Found him to be very interesting, and I liked him a lot. June 22nd, which was a Sunday, was the Fire Department Picnic, which they've already talked about. June 25th, the League of Cities, I attended that League of Cities out in Royal Palm Beach, which is a little bit this side of Tampa. If you know where Royal Palm Beach is, it's a long ways out there, but it was very good. On Friday, the June 27th, I did the Compton Apartment Ribbon Cutting, who just opened up their new complex up in Renaissance, the last phase of their thing, they just opened up, and the first building is already 75% sold in those apartments, they got one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and as usual, they do a, just a top-notch job on their thing. It looks beautiful, it's a beautiful place, if you haven't seen it yet. On the 27th, I also attended my Team of Hope, which is a program I have to try to help people who have felony on their records to try to get employment, still working on that. On June 27th, that night, Friday, I attended the Lego Movie at the park, the free movie of Lego. I think it was for children, but I didn't quite understand it all. On June 30th, I was asked to, that was yesterday, I was asked to attend, if you haven't, if you missed in the paper, unfortunately, we are losing the principal of Boynton Beach High School, she got promoted, and she's going to be working at the headquarters now. So they were interviewing other candidates to become the new principal for Boynton Beach High School, and so that was nice, but they asked me to sit in on the interviews, so I was able to sit in. They, we interviewed seven different people that day, and they got some real talented people that want to take that place for a lot of different reasons. They didn't make the final selection that day, so I can't tell you who it's going to be. And then, yesterday, which was June 30th, I had a real experience, on that 9:25 in the morning, I got involved in a police chase. I was pulling out on 23rd and Congress, and there was a black pickup in front of me, and this squad car came around, and I could tell he was wanting to come over, so I let off, and he got in behind, in front of me, turned on his lights, and the black pickup would not pull over. Instead, he took off and started zigging through traffic, with of course, the cops right after him. Well, he was running lights and everything, and of course, more squad cars came, because I guess they radioed that this guy wasn't stopping. And I want to compliment our police department, fortunately, I was to stay behind them all the way, because there was red lights, and they were, this guy couldn't get through some of the red lights. Can you imagine Congress at 9:30 in the morning, the traffic? So he was having trouble trying to escape. But, so our guy surrounded him, and a little bit north of Gateway, one of our patrol cars had laid down the mat that's supposed to blow out the tires. I don't know if he missed it or what, I don't, or if he did hit it, but they weren't able to stop him until he got to Lantana Road. By now, we had about six cars, and they had blocked him in, and they jumped out with their, with their weapons drawn, and got him out of the car. Turns out, he was a daytime cat burglar that had already robbed the place in Boynton Beach, so our, they, I just want to tell you that I was able to witness it live firsthand, and I'm going to tell you, I'm so proud of our police department, what a great job they did, and made sure that nobody else got hurt on the way up there. So I just want to compliment them on that. On a firsthand job that they saw, yes.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
How fast were you going?
I got to see it all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that Chief Katz jeopardizes you here.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll go to announcements and community and special events. We got post legislative update by Florida Senator Maria Sacks, is she here with us yet this evening? I don't see her, so we'll put that off, if she shows up, we'll move back up to that. Okay, and then we need to announce that beginning July 7th, which is already announced, the City Hall hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We used to be closed on Mondays, as of July 7th next week, that'll change, we'll be open all, five days a week. Fridays we were closed? That's right, I'm sorry. Yeah, we were closed Fridays, so now we won't be. Next, I would ask Director Wally Majors to join me down here for a proclamation, as soon as I can find what I did with it. What happened to my proclamation?
Good evening.
I got it. Hold on, sorry, you're not Wally Major.
This is Mary DeGraffin Wright.
Whereas parks and recreation programs enhance our quality of life by contributing to a healthy lifestyle, increasing communication skills, building self-esteem, teaching life skills, and providing places for enjoyment. Whereas parks and recreation programs boost our economy, enhance property values, attract new business, increase tourism, reduce crime, build family unity, strengthen neighborhood involvement, offer opportunities for social interaction, enhance education, develop creativity, and promote cultural diversity. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty, provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature, help maintain clear and water, and preserve plant and animal wildlife. And whereas recreation, therapeutic recreation, and leisure education are essential to the rehabilitation of individuals who have been ill or disabled. And whereas Boynton Beach recognizes the benefits derived from quality public and private recreation, and parks' resources at the local level, and local parks contribute to the overall quality of life enjoyed by residents and visitors to Boynton Beach. And whereas the National Recreation and Parks Association, and the Florida Recreation and Park Association, and the State of Florida designated July as Recreation and Parks Month. Now therefore, I gerritaylor by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim July 2014 as Parks and Recreation Month. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and call the Seal of City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be fixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the first day of July 2014. Our parks and recreation do a fantastic job, and they've, and they just made so many nice places for our community to enjoy themselves, and we appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Thank you. I'm Mary DeGraffin Wright, from the Recreation and Parks Department. Thank you so much. We really work hard to try to just create a safe haven for our youth and our teens within the community, and also add a lot of family-oriented activities, that's one of our goals this year. So I want to thank the Commission for recognizing our hard work and efforts, as we continue to strive for a much better year each year, and add more and more activities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, the Fourth of July festivities will be held from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. at the Intercoastal Park. There will be free parking and shuttle service from Boynton Beach High School and the City Hall parking lot from 5:30 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. So that's where the festivities are. If you're more than welcome, we always have a great show, people think it's a fantastic fireworks display, so if you want to go to the best, be there, you're going to see some really pretty show.
Comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Would you like to say something?
And also, please, no pets, no pets.
Mr. Mayor, comment?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize, I would not be attending the festivities of the Fourth of July here within the city of Boynton Beach, but I do wish all of you a happy and safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, budget workshop dates, for anybody who wants to attend them, are for the 14, 15 operating capital budget, be Monday, July 21st, beginning at 2:00 p.m. Tuesday, July 22nd, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And Wednesday, July 23rd, beginning at 2:00 p.m. if needed, if we don't finish in the first two days, and they will take place at the City Library Program Room. So that's the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd for budget meetings. Okay. Senator Sacks is here?
Yes.
Good evening, Senator Sacks. We're going to bring you right up, because we were waiting, waiting for you with bated breath. We're so happy for you to be here tonight, thank you so much. So we have Senator Maria Sacks to give us an update.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council members, and to the people of Boynton Beach. My name is Maria Sacks, I'm your state senator. Actually, I've been representing parts of this city for the last eight years, and it's only been in the last two years that I've had the opportunity to represent even more of you. So I figured this time I'd come by and give a little report as to how my job performance has been for you. I think it's very exciting when people go to Tallahassee and represent you in the state government, but the most important part of our government is right here, city government, because this is the first level that everybody in the city gets to connect with. You see the city council members and the mayor, Publix, and other places here in Boynton Beach, and you usually have something to say to them. So it's my obligation to come to you and to find out exactly how I can better represent the people of Boynton Beach. I have learned that one of the most important things to do, as your representative in Tallahassee, is to bring back the money. Bring back the money, bring it home. And I have always tried to do my best, especially when it came, at the very beginning of my legislative time in Tallahassee, I was able to get special vests for the law enforcement officers. We had a number of years ago, a very bad gang here called Top Six, and they had bullets that could pierce any of the, you know, the police officer's vests, so we were able to get funding for that. Being that this is a beautiful beach town, for the first time in 15 years, we were able to pass a parasailing bill. Now, just in case any of you want to go parasailing, you got to wait till October 1st, because that's when the new regulations come into effect, and I'm very proud to have brought that home. Also, people always complain to me, there's never enough doctors. Actually, the person who complains to me the most is my mother. She can never get in to see the doctor, and when she goes there, she has to wait a long time. So we put money into FAU's medical school, and last week, I went to their first class that graduated. They're going to be sending 46 young interns to our hospitals here in Boynton and Delray and Boca Raton. Fact that I had three kids born right here at Bethesda in Boynton Beach, kind of gives me a real link to this area and to this community. So I want you to know you can come see me anytime, I'm here all summer. My office is in Delray City Hall, although I'd be more than happy to talk to you all about moving to the Boynton Beach City Hall one day. But I'm here, and I have two of my staff members, Joshua Freeman and James Pucciano, just started, so I'm here, I'm here to serve you, and I thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners, for the opportunity to address you today.
We thank you for being here and addressing this night. We want to build a new City Hall, so if you can help us get the money, we'll build you a special office.
Sounds like an offer I can't refuse, Mayor. Maybe we could put our, put a little Senate office in there, we could even get some more money from the, from the state for that, that's a good proposition.
Senator Sacks has been a tremendous proponent for all the needs of Boynton Beach up in Tallahassee, and I can tell you one other thing you need to know, is she is, number one on her plate is anything she can do to help veterans. She's been a tremendous supporter of veterans' needs, and I want to thank you for that, and appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you, Mayor, for putting in the Veterans Park here, I've been a part of that for a long time, and it means a lot to me, it shows, I think it shows the true character of a city, as to how it treats its veterans. And I have 16 cities in my district, and I'll tell you something, Boynton Beach is one of the top ones for services for its veterans. I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yes, how are you?
Good, very well.
Good seeing you.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add, which I've been doing to every representative who's coming, dealing with health care. Obviously, at the end of this year, we'll see who's governor, but the issue that this state does not accept money for Medicaid for our citizens is crucial. So as a state senator, I suggest very strongly that you keep endorsing, we need the money. The state is the third most populated state in the country now. The population of seniors is approximately at least 20% of the population, so this is a crucial subject matter, and unfortunately, right now, it hasn't gone through. And I thank you for your help.
Thank you, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Senator Sacks?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for all of your hard work, first of all, but in regards to sober homes within the city of Boynton, although it failed, when it comes back up legislative time, you know, see if you all can do all you can to get it passed, please, thank you, because I'm having problems in District 2.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner, and I'd like to be able to meet with you next two weeks about that issue. We need to partner with our federal legislative delegation, and if we make it seamless, that, that and the fact that I think sober homes and addictions need to be handled under, under mental health, which we really need more funding for mental health, and we need to have these, these facilities in a place where they can be treated outside of our neighborhoods. So I'd be more than happy to meet with you. I really want to... I really want to have a shout out to Tana Ebel. I don't know if she's here or not, from the Children's Services Council, because they have been also a very good partner with us, you know. We have a lot of folks to take care of, I say Commissioners. And I think that the more we partner together, has nothing to do with party partisanship, I think we've had enough of that in Washington. But if we partner together, then we can bring home more of our tax money back to the, to the people of the city and services which they deserve. So thank you again for allowing me to speak to you. And Commissioner McCray, you and I will be talking about that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Senator Sax, it's good to see you again. It always amazes me how you get around in this community. We've been to a lot of events together, and you've shown up at just about everything that is possible to show up that. It just goes to show that you're a real people's senator. You fight for the common people, for the, for the middle class down here. And Senator Sax is up for reelection this year, and I hope that all the people and all the communities that she's helped, in one way or another, she is remembered on Election Day. And Senator Sax, I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to be here. Appreciate it. He's going to get carried. Okay. That moves up to public audience. Anybody in the public who wishes to address the commission on issues not on the agenda may do so at this time. If you'd come forward, give your name and address for the record, and try to make your comment in a three-minute time period.
First, I would like to, Charles E. Cantor, K-A-N-T-E-R, 2905 South Greenleaf Circle, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426. For those who don't know where it is, it's in Parkside. Parkside's right across the street from Renaissance, one of the garden spots, one of the most beautiful communities in this town, except for one problem. We have an open container problem. Open containers are generally frowned upon. Several months ago, the city of Boynton Beach somehow or other bought a Peterbilt truck. Now, Peterbilt is normally the province of the, the sort of the Rolls Royce of the over-the-road crowd, but Boynton Beach managed to purchase one with a can hydraulic arm on it to dump the garbage. That didn't work. It would not release the cans with the, with the tops closed. We tried and tried, talked about it, and it's just not a satisfactory arrangement. It is against the Board of Health regulations, and I want you to look at this little scenario. I want your wife to come home at night in her nice, clean work clothes to a garbage can that's been open all day in the rain, because it rains now in the summertime. So sloshing around in the bottom of the garbage can is probably some insects, maybe a pussycat or a raccoon that jumped in to find out what was in there. And she has to dump this garbage can over to get the water out in her high heels, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I don't think this is a fair thing for you to do. You have dropped the ball on us. We were working on it, and in some way it just, the issue just simply disappeared. Now, you guys are doing a terrific job on the CRA. We love it. I follow you all the time. I love what's going on. I want to be a Boynton booster, but you've got to fix this problem. The guy sold you a bad truck. It doesn't work, and I don't know why you haven't gone right back to the guy who sold it to you and demand he either takes it back or he fixes it. Because the last thing in the world we want is a scandal around this kind of stuff, which, you know, this will happen. Why was a truck like this bought? Why wasn't it fixed? I don't know how many other people, there's 272 people in my community, I'm sure there's a lot in other communities that are the same business. So please, fix it. It needs to be done. Otherwise, you guys are doing terrific. We love you.
Thank you for bringing our attention. We'll look into it.
Mark here, George 248 Main Boulevard. Got a couple quick things. Sunday's paper had a nice article about keeping an eye on rentals. And back in the day when Scott Blasey headed up code, we did a real good job of that. Scott's people monitored that every week, and we had cases in front of the code board dealing with those issues on a regular basis. And now, as, as the article points out, it's now become a problem. Well, back when you had a code board, you had citizens that, when they were made aware of things, would bring it up to the code officers and that type of thing. Now you have a special magistrate. The special magistrate doesn't live in the city. So in the, I know you did it for efficiency and everything, but it's kind of not working out the right way. So, you know, think about those people that volunteered and did a good job on that code board. Also, it's something that we need to look at because more and more people are not paying the business, business tax, they're not paying the bed tax that the county desperately needs for helping promote tourism to places like our Marina and other things. And I just wish you would look at the code situation right now and hopefully revisit that decision that was made. Additionally, this past weekend, we had a service at St. John's for a wonderful man. And Lori, you know about Ocean Parkway and those properties? Well, the man that brought that to my attention about those properties passed away this, we had his funeral service this weekend. And I went to bat, and Brian went to bat for the situation on his street because he asked me to. And that man was Eddie Will Durham. And none of you have probably ever heard, other than Mr. McCray and Mr. Hay and a few other people here that knew Mr. Durham, but Mr. Durham lived his life the right way. He was a very humble man. He put God first, he put his wife second, and his family third. And his community was very important to him. And when he would take walks with his wife when he was able to, when this whole thing started with those properties on Ocean Parkway, and God bless Lori LeVerrier for taking the lead on it and making sure that things got taken care of, after several years where things didn't get taken care of. Because he took care of his property, he cared about his community, and it was a pleasure to help him in that effort. Because those eyesores aren't there anymore. It's better than it was. And when you have good people, good decent people in your community, you should appreciate them. And I miss the man. He was a good, decent man. And I just wanted you to know that he appreciated your efforts, Lori, and the commission's efforts on that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. Mayor, I want to thank you for your comments about the Palm Beach Pops. We too felt it was a very, very worthwhile program and quite successful, and we hope to do it again next year.
Well done.
Summer has gotten off to a very strong start at the museum. The month of June saw a significant increase in not only visitation, program participation, and membership sales. Over last year, we resulted in a 25% increase in gross income month-to-date, year-over-year. July's also gotten off, starting off, started off with a bang. Today, you know we are a small museum. We had over 230 guests come through the museum, not including a group of 36 children from Planet Kids in Wellington. 25 children were in this morning's story and more. 26 children and their parents participated in this afternoon's tub time, where they dug, poured, dumped, molded, and built with moon sand. And judging from the appearance of the classroom after the program, it was a rounding, a rounding success. New classes are underway. We do expect a very strong July. We will be closed, as you know, in observance of Independence Day. And for those of you who are still looking for something to do on the Fourth of July, we have a handful of tickets left. And finally, we are thrilled to announce that the Schoolhouse Children's Museum and Learning Center has won the South Florida Parenting 2014 Kids Crown Award for the Best Museum/Theater in Palm Beach County. And last time we won that was in six years ago, in 2008. So we are very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add that the Children's Museum is really a, just a great thing for our city. We're so proud of what goes on there. But like anything else, they are struggling financially, you know, they go out for grants and they, they be able to provide these things through membership, basically membership or sponsors who want to contribute to the Children's Museum. So if you've got a little extra cash laying around, you want to help out with a really good cause, the Children's Museum would be glad to talk to you. Thank you. Good evening.
Herb's, citizen of Boynton Beach. I would like to start tonight with...
Address, address?
Oh, 1711 Woodburn Drive.
Thank you.
I'd like to start tonight with the annual report card for each, and tonight we have, start off with the mayor. Mayor, you're the best we've ever had, and we'll give you a triple A, like done and bred. Keep up the good work and just keep the city solidified. So you're way up there. It's the first time I've given a triple A rating.
Thank you.
So thank you.
It's one man's opinion.
No, I think, I think we all appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Even though you were in the Air Force, but that's okay. The Rookie of the Year, the Rookie of the Year on that commission, and I'm glad we got him, is Michael Fitzpatrick. He is the rookie commissioner, and he's the, like in the baseball, he's the Rookie of the Year. And Commissioner Fitzpatrick, please keep up the good work with the green stuff. I'll be working with you hopefully on the rising seas, on global warming, which we all agree on, or most of us anyway. The next one is Commissioner Casello.
Vice Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Call me anything, as long as you give me a good mark.
I want to tell you something. In the short time that I know you, from when you were, you know, you took over for District Four, bingo, an A, straight A. So, in fact, I may even A to the first power, which is algebraic. So you're, you're okay. And...
It's a lot higher mark than I got in high school, so I'm really happy.
And Mac McCray, let me tell you something. Glad you're back on board, and we're going to give you an A to the second power. So that's, that's pretty good. And I want to get back to the status of global warming. I'll be working with, with some of the people on global warming. I was in Ireland last year, and I was there two weeks before I was there, which never happened before, 95 degrees every day. The Gulf Current sees a war rising. My son was in Iceland last year, they're feeling it. So we just have to, we, it's just, anybody doesn't, doesn't believe in it. Out of 10,000 scientists, only two out of the 10,000 said there wasn't. And so I hope we'll be working together, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Mr. Suss, excuse me?
Mr. Suss?
Yeah. I thank you for your kind comments, sir. I want to continue to share this with you. I want to continue to remain humble. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Dan Spotts, 805 North Federal Highway. I wanted to follow up on Commissioner McCray's comments earlier about All-Aboard Florida. I'm not sure if there's workshops or whatever, or any other information that the commission will be dealing with here, but as a small business owner, I'm real concerned about it. I know there was meetings in Jupiter last night for their city commission. I don't really know how they went. From what little I know about it, I don't see a big upside for Boynton Beach, but maybe I'm missing something. I see significant costs with the railroad crossings. Later on this evening, we're going to be talking, I suppose, about this Ocean 500, this large development, which in general I think is perhaps a good idea, but it's more congestion downtown. I'm not sure how this All-Aboard Florida program with 32 more trains going by in addition to these developments, in addition to the other developments that you want to encourage in the downtown corridor, could be impacted. So I'd like to see if the commission has any plans to have a better public discussion and what our positioning should be, and how we can work either to make it better or to block it, or how it's going to work out.
Thank you for your input. We, anybody else who wants to address the commission this time? Seeing none, we will close the public audience, go to administrative, and we go to appointments of eligible members from the community to serve on vacant positions on the city advisory boards. We have one board opening tonight, the Building Board of Adjustment Appeals. Commissioner Merker, you have an alternate and appointment? There's one applicant, Andrew Padre.
So move, please.
I have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to address the addition I put on, on the end of this. I want to announce the people who this commission decided to appoint a Mental Health Advisory Board, which we think is, so many things going on now that concern mental health. You know, parents hurting their children, children hurting their parents, or people doing things that are just, just bad for the whole community. So we've took, we're going to appoint a Mental Health Board that will look into and see if the city is doing everything they can in this area. So I will, I'm going to announce these to the commission so they'll know, these people were all interviewed, and we tried to do, bring in every area of the community so that nothing would be left out. So I will just, there's, we've appointed nine members and two alternates. So the first one, who we had made as the chair at the last meeting, was ex-mayor Woodrow Hay. He's a male African-American clergy, former mayor, chaplain for Safety Forces, public service in Boynton Beach, and East Boynton resident. Second one was Ron Washam, a male Caucasian senior, 35-year resident, community activist, set up an ESE program for county and supervised it for 20 years. Mayorial candidate in 2003, and now Habilitation Center, East Boynton resident. Number three is Charlie Brown, an RN, a female African-American drug addiction, mental illness specialization, life coaching for dual diagnostic clients through Renaissance Center, facilitate support group at Lord's Place, supports facilitator for all ages via church deliverance ministry, and owns a nursing service in East Boynton. The fourth person nominated was Margaret Newton, a master's in multicultural education, female Afro-Caribbean, 30 years in Palm Beach County school system, middle school teacher, multicultural administrator, parent of consumer, parent of consumer in East Boynton. Fifth person was Mary McClory, an RN, female Caucasian, vice president of Quality Organizational Effectiveness, Bethesda Hospital, recommended by Bethesda Hospital CEO, wants to address many issues hospital faces with patients who have mental illness. And she's from East Boynton. Number six was Sherri Johnson, female Caucasian, executive director of Community Caring Center of Greater Boynton Beach. She's worked with the Secret Garden Cafe in East Boynton, community activist. And number seven, we have an opening there. They're still interviewing this person that's, will be a male Hispanic supervisory position. We're working with several people to see to fill that position. Let's see, eight, that was for Safety Forces. This is a Haitian culture. We're still working to fill that position. Number nine was Gerda Klein, who's a female Caucasian, mental health advocate, chair of the Boynton Beach Mental Health Initiative member of Palm Beach County, Action Alliance for Mental Health, West Boynton resident. Let's see, our alternate, our first alternate was Paul Zito, a male, 15-year resident, West Boynton, addiction recovery, 18 years, retired air traffic controller, son with schizophrenia, who is doing well, volunteered with Community Friends Program at Broward for two years, ran the program for two years, wrote resource booklet, Connections, ran compere program in Palm Beach County for two years, member of Constellation Ministry at St. Mark's Church in East Boynton, West Boynton resident. And the, see, who was my second alternate? Here it is. Alicia Agnew, female immigration, immigrant from Trinidad, working on master's degree at Lynn University, become licensed mental health counselor, wants to reach out to cultures resisting learning about mental illness, sensitive to immigrant experience, can do research, very bright, articulate, can do presentations, worked at South Florida Management District for six years as organization developer trainer, spent 11 years at Department of Revenue Child Support Enforcement in East Boynton. Revenue Child Support Enforcement in East Boynton. So those are the nine people plus two alternates. And this time, I'd like to ask our, our chair, if you would come forward, Woodrow Hay, former mayor Woodrow Hay, and see what else you'd like to say about this group.
Mr. Mayor, being in order, you know, since we, it's a board appointed, I'd like to offer motion that we accept those names on that board.
Thank you, I was going to ask for that. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion second. Any other discussion?
Unready. There is, there's one more alternate, we have three alternates.
Oh, I didn't see that.
And that's Cynthia Schuman.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's a board certified psychiatric nurse, female Caucasian, 30 years experience, can do education events, knows the county system, networks, professionals, well skilled in helping people find services they need. West Boynton did not appear interested in serving, if not selected as one of the seven, very interested in serving. So I guess she's an alternate now.
But that addition.
Okay, I have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous.
Thank you very much. Woodrow Hay, 427 Northwest Fifth Avenue, Boynton Beach. I just want to thank this commission for their appointing this, approving this committee. I want to thank them for the, especially the mayor for coming up with the idea. He and I talked about this. We were blessed with many, many good applicants. It shows that there's a genuine interest in this city. We are among the first to do such a thing as we are trying to approach to do right now. I consider myself the, the least of so many qualified applicants that we have working on this great commission. I, I would like, with the permission of the mayor and the commission, to at least have them stand so everybody can, can see who they are. And I think there's someone here wants to take pictures, so we could take just a few moments.
Sure. Please stand up, we appreciate your, your willingness to serve.
And would you come and line up across here? Come and line up across here. This young lady-
You want to come up here? I think they want to take some photos, if you'd line up up here by the podium?
Can be seen.
Thank you.
And while they're doing that, I was glad to hear Maria Sacks mention about funding of mental health. That's going to be a great thing. There is a statement that Gerda Klein, who was my right hand in all of this, she, she's out of town, she had death in the family, she couldn't be here tonight. Y'all, wait a minute, I want to be in the picture.
Don't break the camera.
So, but she, she will be back and, but Seth will read a statement that she has written that she, I'd like to have read, okay?
Okay. Get the picture first, then we'll hear the statement. Tall ones in back, short ones up front. Thank you for your service. Go ahead, I'll let it finish.
Sure, great, well, thank you very much, Mr. Hay. My name is Dr. Seth Burnson, I'm here on behalf of the Action Alliance for Mental Health in Palm Beach County and Mr. Mayor, commissioners, staff and guests, I'm very honored to be here on behalf of Gerda Klein, who Mr. Hay said is, is out of town unfortunately, for this momentous occasion that you have just approved your, your committee members to look at the mental health needs of, of the residents here in Palm Beach County. So if you don't mind, I will read a statement from, from Gerda who, you know, wishes she could be here. Before I say a few words about the process of selecting the advisory committee, I would like to ask the members of the Boynton Beach Mental Health Initiative who are here this evening to stand and be recognized. Gerda is the co-founder and current chair of this initiative and has been working for the last five years to get to this effort. They've been working to promote mental health education and awareness through a variety of partnerships and activities here in our community. We captured the attention of Mayor Taylor and Mayor Hay with our first community conversation in Boynton Beach addressing students' social, emotional, behavioral health, and educational needs at the Courtyard Marriott last September, in cooperation with the Palm Beach County Action Alliance for Mental Health. You two were, were there the whole time and we greatly appreciated that effort. The mayor and former mayor recognize that mayors can have a very important role in providing leadership and support to address behavioral health needs of youth, adults, families and seniors, and this resulted in the creation of the Boynton Beach Mental Health Advisory Committee by yourselves. There is so much energy around this effort and it is safe to say that a major part of it is coming from the members of the new committee, who are meeting each other for the first time this evening. It is an exciting time and it is good to see so many people here to mark this historic occasion. Surely, the stars were aligned when each of the candidates called the city clerk to put their name on the list of those wanting to serve. From May 1st to mid-June, each candidate was interviewed face-to-face for an hour, and to the person, each spoke of the privilege it would be to serve, of their passion about mental health, and their desire to make Boynton Beach a model city for breaking the silence of mental illness and addressing our community's overall behavioral health issues. We explained to each of the, to each at the beginning that we had more candidates than positions on the committee, and asked that if they were not selected for the committee, would they serve on a subcommittee as we move forward? And without hesitation, each expressed their honor in serving in either capacity. In the end, it was really Mayor Hay and I, Gerda, who felt so privileged and proud to meet these outstanding candidates as they shared their professional and personal experience, offering a rich diversity of skills and life experiences. We are proud to present them to you this evening. Our first meeting together will be a mini-retreat to get acquainted and start the conversation about our shared vision, mission and goals. In the coming months, we look, we look to many more leaders of the community coming forward to work with us to make the greater Boynton Beach community the best it can. Submitted on behalf of Gerda Klein.
Thank you very much. I just want to add that, yes. I just want to add that there is, there's no shame in having a mental health problem. The only shame is not doing anything about it. So, that's, that's important.
Absolutely. Doctor, I would very much have, would have liked to have been on this committee, but being an elected official, I was advised not to. I say this over and over again, dealing with mental health, because professionally, I'm in this field of people with cognitive impairments. I accept and understand and totally support talking about children and teenagers and so forth, but cognitive impairments, Alzheimer's disease, is the most frightening thing you can experience when it hits your spouse, it hits your father, your mother, and I'm hoping, hoping that this committee will truly address this area of cognitive impairment as we get older and what could happen to us. It's that important a subject matter and it tears a family apart.
Well, I'm certainly an informal advisor, you know, from the Action Alliance for Mental Health, but I would imagine they would look at the full spectrum of mental health conditions and take direction from the, from the commission for sure.
I'm hoping you do because it's that important and as a doctor, I'm sure you know it.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. To Board Chair, Commissioner, Board Chair, Commissioner Hay, scratch all that, to Chairman Hay, since Senator Sykes invited me to meet with her, I'm going to relinquish my meeting and that would be a nice place for you all to start to meet with her instead of me meeting with her, and then you all could bring information back to this board instead of one person. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to item B, which was to approve the changing of the date of the second meeting in July from Tuesday, July 15th to Wednesday, July 16th, to allow Mayor Taylor, City Manager Lori Laverre, Finance Director Tom Howard, and to attend the pension workshop from-
Tim Howard, Tim, not Tom, Tim.
Tim Howard, did I say Tom, sorry.
Yes.
Tim Howard to attend the pension workshop from July 14th and 15th, 2014. I'd just like to add that if any other member of the commission would wish to go on that, let me speak up, we'd be glad to touch you, it's, it's up in Buena Vista, Florida. Commissioner.
Mayor, yes, I would like to. I just want to bring out a point of information about this speaker. I did some research, he's a young gentleman, his name is Carl Mayo. He's a former commissioner in San Diego, California. He ran for mayor there and lost. The reason I'm bringing this up is that the subject matter of pensions is extremely important for all cities. I just would like, as I said, Mayor, I'd like to go, he's defined as a libertarian, okay? I'm not saying it's bad or good, but that's defined as very conservative. I'm hoping that if I'm able to go with the mayor and the other staff, that we have an open mind to realize that there's a more middle-ground way of thinking possibly. As I said, former Mayo, Commissioner Mayo, is a libertarian, extremely conservative, and I think we have to be open-minded to exactly what he is going to say.
Any other commissioners want to make that trip?
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for extending that invitation to the rest of the commission. I think it's, it's an important topic, it's going to be on our horizon in the near future here, and I think that the information we get out of this would be real helpful in the future, so thank you for inviting us.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the changes, but Commissioner Merker going as a representative.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous.
Thank you.
Appoint a voting delegate. Do you want to go too? Oh yeah, okay, also, he wants to go also, add him to the list, okay.
Aye.
Okay, appoint a voting delegate to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, August 14th through the 16th, 2014. I believe that'll be down in Hollywood, Florida. I am already a voting, the voting member for the city on the Florida League of Cities, so, not on the Florida, on the League of Cities here locally, so we need to appoint somebody from here to, to vote at this meeting, and so it's up to you all if you want to. Let me continue to vote, yeah, I'm going.
I move the mayor is the delegate.
Second.
I have a motion second.
Point info, I thought you said you were already a voting member.
I'm a voting member of the-
Local.
Local, but this is the Florida League of Cities.
We got to vote for him.
So we have to have somebody that can vote if they think-
Vote for him.
Does anybody else wish to attend that? Okay, is there, have a motion-
I'd like to know on that.
Yeah, let the city manager know.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Authorize city commissioners to travel to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference in Hollywood. So you, this is to, if anybody else wants to go, you can be-
I would, and I would encourage the commission, you know, this is something for the, this is a conference geared toward elected officials, and it's, you know, it's local, you don't have the expenses of the overnight stay, I would, if you have the opportunity, we have the brochure in the backup, you might want to take a look at it, I just think it's a good experience for each of you.
It's in Hollywood, yeah.
Affordable.
14th through the 16th, it's a three-day thing, but they do cover a lot of-
Yeah, you can go back and forth, you can go down for certain sessions that interest you, there is a registration fee for it, but I would, you know, take a look at it if you-
Okay. If you want to go, just let the city manager know so she can make your, the arrangements.
Right.
Right? So just let her know if you want to attend that. Okay, so we need a motion to authorize city commissioners to travel to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Consent agenda, we had an item pulled, item D, supporting the Children's Service Council of Palm Beach County, Inc., authorizing, that will be on the ballot November 4th, 2014.
No.
No, it wasn't?
No, no, I did it under the, no.
Sorry, keep going.
It's all right.
Okay, I believe we have somebody who wants to-
Tony Balls here from the Children's Services Council.
On the Children's Service Council? That's why we pulled it.
Good evening, I'm Tana Ebley with the Children's Services Council of Palm Beach County, and we are right up the street at Gateway and I-95, and very honored to be part of your city, and we would appreciate your support. And just let me comment that a lot of conversation has been about mental health. We are actually investing quite heavily in mental health, particularly focusing on mental health for mothers of young children, and the impacts that that has. So we're putting about, probably around $6 million in that as we speak. So, we appreciate your help and support, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we certainly will, we want you to stay in business, so we'll be doing that. So, is there a motion to approve the supporting of the Children's Service Council?
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, best of luck. Can I have another separate motion to approve the other consent agenda items?
So move.
Is there, I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Takes us to item seven, proposed resolution number R14-054. I'll let the attorney, it's authorize the city manager to sign a contract, a CDM Construction Instructors, Inc., for progressive design build for ion exchange resin plant and the east water treatment plant improvements. Is there a motion? Well, after the discussion, after we get a motion on the floor, we need a motion first.
Our motion to approve by discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion second, discussion.
Yes.
Commissioner Merker.
I would, simply what I would like is a little more background knowledge, it's very, if my eyes are seeing right, the projected value is $30 million, so I'd like a little, a short synopsis of this.
No, $1,131,000. Thirty, thirty-
The total project value.
Oh, it's 30 million. You got, okay.
I'll split it with you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before staff start presenting, you know, I was on the same page as Commissioner Merker, because I'm just saying, well, we're spending this kind of money, the public needs to know what are we spending this type of money for, and it needs to be addressed, we have the backup, they don't have the backup, and it needs to be addressed.
Okay, well, we'll have staff talk about it, but Commissioner Casello.
I have a few questions, my own, unless you guys, you want to present first, then we'll-
Yeah.
We do have a short presentation, if you'd like it.
It won't be great.
It won't take long. And it does kind of go over some of the information.
Go ahead.
Y'all.
Roll it.
You go now, okay. Wasn't quite sure if you were ready. The purpose of this project is to-
Give us your name.
Oh, Colin Groff, Utilities Director.
Thank you.
I apologize, I wasn't quite ready to do this. The purpose of this project is to meet the city's requirements under the consumptive use permit. The consumptive use permit was granted to the city and part of that permit restricted the withdrawals from the east, eastern wellfields. To meet the demand of the city, of course, the demand of the city is growing in the eastern part of the city, and to meet that demand, we have to move water from the west to the east. So the purpose of this project is to actually develop the capacity required by the city to serve the demands under the consumptive use permit. So that's basically the purpose of it. The project is a little bit behind schedule now, not much, but a little bit, but we're going to catch it back up, but we do have some permit requirements and some deadlines we have to meet to slow down what we're pulling out of the wells on the eastern part of the city. So that's really the purpose of the project, is to meet, to meet those demands. There's some other project considerations. One is, is the east plant is fairly old, starting to wear out, and there's a lot of components wearing out, so one of the, one of the parts of this project is to upgrade that plant. We're going to be looking at energy cost reductions everywhere we can in the project. One of the big issues we have right now is the control system at the east plant is failing. We are going to pull that up into early construction, that's part of the $1 million you're approving today. Today, we're asking for approval of the $1,103,770. That's what you're, that's what we're approving today. The 30 million is the project budget that we will come back to you with.
Right.
But, but in that early part, there's some early constructions to replace that control system, which is failing. And then, then there's some planned equipment replacement at the plant also that needs to be replaced. It's been put on hold for many, many years while the city's been discussing this project and coming up with how to build this project, and it's at the end of its life and it needs to be replaced. The main part of the project is to treat the well water from the west grid to a point where it can be moved to the east grid and, and used in the east grid. It's a long ways to pump, and part of the issue is, is we have to, we have to take the biological parts out of the water before it gets to the east grid, so we don't create components that are not allowed to be created in the water. So really, the purpose of the project is to build a plant that's going to treat the water to the level required to provide service to the city, and then, then we can reduce the, the supply from the east well like required in, in the consumptive use permit. So, the current project, the, the schedule right now is July through October of this year, we'll be doing phase one design service, and design build, and again, this is a project where the- where the contractor, the engineer, and the owner are working together as a team from the beginning. So, the contractor's on board and working with the design. So, the first part of the design is to get to the point where we call guaranteed maximum price. That's the price that we will negotiate, that we won't exceed for the project. But the first thing you have to do is design the project. So, we're going to be designing to about 60% to 70% design by October. We'll also, in that same time period, be doing some of those early construction services, which are replacing the control system at the east plant, putting in the construction trailers and some of the pre, doing some of the pre-construction work necessary at the plant, so we can move to construction fairly quickly after the commission approves the guaranteed maximum price. So, this will come back to you. Today is the $1 million plus. It'll come back to you with the construction fee of Phase 2. And we're looking at the November timeframe, which we will be bringing that to you. And then, we, the engineers will finalize the design while the construction is going on, on some of the preliminary construction. And construction really starts in earnest in January. That's our schedule right now, and it's an 18-months construction schedule to finish the entire project. Right now, the project has two main components. One is at the west plant, building the ion resin exchange plant, the ion exchange plant. And the other part of the project is upgrading the east plant to accept that water and treat it and get it out to the customers. It includes a 6 million gallon reservoir, a new high-service pump station to pump the water out to it, and the ion exchange plant. So, that's the basic components. We'll get you more information as we develop it. We're in conceptual stages right now, and so, we will, we will continue to bring it, and we'll, hopefully, we'll be bringing you monthly reports on it also as we go through the design, so you'll see where we're going and how we're moving, and the public can see that also. And just a real quick of the, this contract, you know, today, we're asking for approval for the Phase 1 design services, which is about $527,000, $528,000. And then, the early construction services, which is that, the work we're doing at the east plant that we're behind on, that we need to get up to date. I did want to, this was an issue that had come up before previously, which we don't need to talk about, but the design build fee, which is the, basically the profit margin that we will pay the firm, because it's an open book contract. Basically, we will see every cost that goes in, every subcontractor cost, every cost, everything that goes into the project, we'll have in an open book. There's nothing hidden. We'll be able to review that. On top of all those costs in the construction, the design builder gets a profit, and their profit, we've negotiated at 5.95%. We have 120, 20 days in the contract to develop that guaranteed maximum price, which is what we'll bring back to you in October, in November, and it'll have a lot of detail in it. We'll provide that detail as we're developing it. It's, again, open book contract, and there are some incentives in there to provide some savings after we've set that guaranteed maximum price, to save some money after that and move that price down. Goal of this project is to bring it in lower than the $30 million price tag right now. That is, that's the goal we're working toward. So, anyways, that's kind of where we are on it. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer. I just want to do the quick summary here.
Vice Mayor Cassello?
Yeah, Colin. Just, this was brought before us a little while back, and we had some discussion on the pricing, with this company being a little higher. And I hear that, well, I see now that you've reduced their fee from 9.8 down to 5.95.
Correct.
You're right. So, that's, now, MH, HC's fee was 3.75, right?
Correct.
Three and three quas. So, that's about $660,000 higher, just in that fee there alone, correct? Give or take.
As proposed.
As proposed. Okay. And I, I thought in the beginning that the lump sum design fee was 530,000. And now, I see it's 1,131,000.
Again, it's, it's, well, let me go back, and it's broken. There's two parts of, if I can get my, there we go. There's two parts of the fee right now. The one is the design fee, which is 527,000, 530,000. The second part is the actual construction work that we're going to do at the plant in Phase 1. We're going to do it early. Again, that's, the main part of that is the control systems at the plant that are failing. I mean, they have failed since I've been here. They've failed multiple times, which means the plant actually goes offline and it's...
There's no doubt. We need it.
So, we, we're going to be starting construction early, and that's what the $600,000 is for. It's not for the design part. It's for the early construction of the plant. So, the design is the 530,000. The design fees that were proposed, again, remember, there was a proposal section where they, each proposer proposed some pricing. That's what the numbers you were using was in the proposals. And the ranges from that, where the design fee ranges from that was 530,000, which was actually the number-one ranked firm offered that, to $750,000 as a design fee. So, we're at the bottom of that range negotiating. And then, of course, the design build fee that was proposed was from the 3.75 to the 9.8 range, and there was one in there that was at 6. The 5.95 is a good number based on industry standard practices for that number. The 3.75, as I stated before, was a little low. There was probably some other areas that would have to make up for that. That's a little low for a profit margin for design build fee. Could they do it? Absolutely, but it was fairly low.
But in the end, it's costing us $660,000 more, if everything stands as it is?
The assumption is you pick the highest ranked firm based on their qualifications. The theory is, is they will design the least-cost facility for you. So, if both firms, 1, 2, and 3, all designed a facility that costs $30 million, that's correct. But if number 1, let's say they designed it for 27 million, number 2, 29 million, and number 3 would have done something for 30 or 31 million because they're less qualified, then your, your cost for your number 1, even though the percentage would be higher, would be less overall. We don't know where that's going to be, because we haven't gotten to the guaranteed maximum price. The 5.95 is greater than the 3.75, but there are other places that that could be made.
So, no matter what, so, no matter where that number ends up, 3.75 is always going to be lower than 5.95?
It's always lower in that particular item, but not in the rest of the items that they're in the open book pricing.
I just, I just think the city is, you know, we could have looked at this more in a savings view here. That other company was a great company, great reputation. You know, I don't know why we have to go on a limb for, you know, between 5 and 6, 700,000, you know?
Well, our, our goal is to not be on a limb on that. Our goal is to save that with the number-one firm, the firm that was chosen, because they were chosen based on their qualifications and design.
But just with the percentages are higher to start with, no matter what number comes in, they're going to be, they're going to pay, we're going to pay more money.
Yes. If everything is equal amongst all teams at the end of a design...
We pay more money.
Unfortunately, we won't know that. So, we can't.
Mr. McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff, in your presentation, and I recognize that you're probably nervous, but you did say, what we are approving today, staff, don't make the approval decision. It is the elected officials.
The commission is approving today. I thought that's what I said, but...
No, 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 no. You said, what we are approving today. I said, I know you're nervous, sir.
Right. We may have.
What they're asking us to approve, yeah.
Yeah.
The commission, we're asking the commission to approve.
Mr. Merker?
Yeah. Couple of questions, please. How are you tonight?
Very good.
Am I right to assume that the cost being what it is, you feel that this firm is the best qualified? Is that a fair question to do the job?
I wasn't involved in the qualification select, selection process. This firm is a very good firm. They've done a lot of this, lots of this kind of work. They've worked in this county on this type of plant. I think they're a very good firm, and they'll do a very good job for the city. The goal here is to have them do such a good job that we lower the overall cost of the project lower than the budget, because that's really what we're shooting for.
Because what I'm also hearing with a question mark is the fact that it's an assumption, it's an assumption this price, it's not a definite price. Is that, is that accurate on my part?
Which price? The budget number?
The total budget number, yes.
Yes. That, right now, that's a budget number based on some estimates. That's not, we, we don't know exactly what the final price is going to be.
All right. Because what I'm thinking of, and I may be incorrect to say it the way I'm going to say it, is I'm basing this on the judgment of the professionals, which obviously includes yourself, that you feel that this company that you're putting forth is a solid company. The question is, as you go through the different stages, you, we are contracted into this country, company. We can't change, right?
No. At, at the guaranteed maximum price stage...
Yeah.
Which is at the end of this phase.
Yes.
If we can, if, if the commission, I say we again, if the commission chooses not to sign, to go further on, they have, the contract gives the right for the city to pull out of that contract and go in a different direction. That's why it's called progressive design build. We work to a point where we can set a guaranteed maximum price.
Okay.
If we don't agree with that price, we can step off and go a different direction.
Okay. So, it's, okay, good. So, okay, thank you.
Ms. Patrick, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Okay. Just a couple of points. When you mentioned in one of the slides, the district, I assume you're referring to South Florida Water Management District provided the permits?
That's correct.
And that the reason you can't draw in any more water from the east wellfields is because if you do, they'll end up with saltwater intrusion?
That's correct.
Okay. My question is, the, the number-two company, which in the initial ranking was number one, are there any bid protests? Is this going to come back, or is that gone?
That's gone. The president...
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't believe there is. I think that might be a question from Jim.
I can give you some information on that. It's gone. The president of that company was upset that they even talked about maybe protesting it, said he'd never protest those things. He believes in the city of Boynton Beach and looks forward to working with us in the future.
Okay. And I'm going to let Jim answer the legal question, because...
The time period for challenging the commission's decision on the bid protest has expired.
Okay. When I was, we were discussing with this yesterday, we, we mentioned, or you mentioned, or I asked, or something, that these, all these bids have been reviewed contracts by the inspector general, and so, we're not going to get into a problem like Delray or anything with signing beach chairs?
The inspector general has reviewed really almost every contract of any substance that the city commission considers. And if the inspector general intended to challenge the city, I think we could have expected it at this particular point, that there'd be some representative here recommending that the commission not act or move forward.
Well, I, I was just, I understand. Good. And I was, I'm kind of using it as a segue to say that, you know, we're getting services from the inspector general, and as far as I know, the city isn't paying anything towards inspector general running the office. And I, I kind, in my personal opinion, the city should be, you know, if you get something, you get a service, you should pay for it. My understanding, I also had a question from a constituent about the lump sum design at, at the 530,000, now on the same page as 101,130,000. And the way I read it is that that was a task 1 through 5, this is on page 178 of the backup, and that this early construction task stuff is task 6. And so, this extra 600,000 is basically part of the 30 million, not an additional to the original 30 million?
No, it's part of the 30, yeah, it's part of the original project, part of the $30 million budget.
So, it's just moving something...
Up sooner.
Yes.
Forward. It's not an addition. It's not an addition increase. Okay. That's all my questions.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. The...
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. I think we had that first before we had discussion, right? All in, this is Proposed Resolution 14054. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, the motion is unanimous. Thank you. Proposed Resolution R14055. Authorize city manager to execute individual contracts with three firms for each of the four scope categories for a total of 12 contracts as a result of RFQ 0172821-14. For general consulting services, individual task orders for projects will be issued and submitted to the commission for approval in accordance with the city's purchasing policies and procedures. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, the motion is unanimous.
I would just like to say one discussion, but I'd just like to say, I think it was a good idea. We discussed this yesterday, where you're basically having a pool of 12 engineering firms to draw from. And so, I think that gives, I think that's a good idea that the city's using, so you're not tied in with one firm.
Thank you. Item C is Proposed Resolution 14056. Approve a contract with Mancon Incorporated for the Lake Boynton Estates Utility Improvement Project, bid number 0302821-14, in the amount of $1,513,874.45, plus a 10% contingency of $151,387.45. If needed, for staff approval of change orders for unforeseen conditions, for a total expenditure of $1,665,261.90. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve with a presentation by staff or at least comments for the project.
Okay. Is there, I have a motion to discussion. Staff, anyone, I think we've asked for a presentation.
I can just give a little, I mean, we didn't prepare a slide, but we can give a little summary, and then Chris, Chris is here to answer any technical questions. I haven't been here long enough to know the project in and out.
Okay.
But this work is actually installing about 10,000 linear feet of 6-inch and 8-inch water line. It's basically a water line replacement project to replace old asbestos concrete and galvanized piping in the Boynton Lates Estates area. There's also, it's about 2,000 feet of it is 10-inch asbestos concrete pipe, which we're going to be taking out of service. That's the pipe that breaks a lot. When it, when it gets old, it starts getting brittle and starts to break. So, we're getting that out of service. The project also contains some stormwater work in the area that's needed. As, as we go through the streets, if there's a stormwater issue, we address it during that project. And so, there, in this, this particular area, there's not a lot. There's some swell rebuilding and some things like that, but there's not a lot. The next section that we'll be, we'll be bringing to you for, for your review has a lot more stormwater in it, but this particular section doesn't have a lot in it, but it's mostly just water line replacement. And we'd love to answer any questions.
Mr. McCray?
Right. I'd like to say to staff, thank you, but I'm just saying, when we're spending this kind of money, I'm just saying that the public do need to hear what we're doing. I'm just saying, I don't want them to think that we are rubber stamping everything that comes before us.
Absolutely. And we're, and we're working on, and we are working on some communications, better communication, so we can put these things out, so people can see them. And some of them, you'll, you'll start seeing some of these in the next, you know, four to six weeks out in the public.
We're working on better what? Better communication skills?
Communication skills. Yes.
I have a motion to discuss. And second, any other discussion? Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
When we were discussing this yesterday, we were trying, I was trying to figure out late where Lake Boynton Estates are, and I thought it was Old Boynton, where Treasure Isle is or something. But reading it over now, it kind of sounds like it's west of I-95 in front of Leisureville, south of Boynton Beach Boulevard. I'm just saying, in the future, I, I'm more comfortable with having a map in the backup, because I, you know, we're...
Absolutely.
And my, my other question is, I don't understand how you have 10-inch pipe and you're replacing it with 6 or 8-inch. How do you get the same flow, or what's, how's that work? Diameters?
Well, our engineers looked at, at the, the current layout, and then where there's areas where we may have had a 10-inch, we may have parallel lines there...
Parallel lines, okay.
In the future, where it would add to either 10-inch or even greater, greater hydraulic flow.
About the record, we know you, but staff don't know you. I'm just saying, what's your name? Tell them.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm Chris Rochek. I'm Engineering Division Manager with Utilities.
Thank you. I have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, the motion is unanimous. Code compliance and legal settlements. Approve negotiated settlement in the amount of $45,000 in the case of Clifford Henfield versus the city of Boynton Beach. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, the motion unanimous.
Wait, wait. I'm sorry. We're, where are the code lines here, this 45,000?
Number 8, yeah.
Okay. I, yeah, I, I'm not in favor of that. I question the amount.
Are you voting no?
Yes.
Okay. So, I show the motion passes 4 to 1, with Commissioner Merker voting no. Public hearing. Item A is Proposed Ordinance Number 14006 on second reading. I'll turn it over to the...
Motion to remove from the table.
The motion removed from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, the motion unanimous. I'll turn it over to the attorney for reading the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida regarding the application of Thomas Hayden of Morgan Boynton Beach, LLC, amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land located on the southwest corner of Ocean Avenue and Federal Highway, extending south to southeast 2nd Avenue and west to southeast 4th Street, as more fully described herein, from mixed-use high 378 multifamily residential and retail to mixed-use high 241 retail, excuse me, multifamily dwelling units, retail and office, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Mayor, the, this item, item A on the agenda under public hearing, and B, which is the site plan related to the project, are both quasi-judicial proceedings. Is the applicant here?
Can I just go ahead and offer a motion to remove B from the table, too?
The motion removed. Item B from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, the motion unanimous.
Does the applicant have any objection to consolidating the public hearing on both these items?
No, we do not.
Okay. Anybody who intends to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. The documents that are part of the commission agenda package this evening are part of the record of the proceeding. If there are other documents that any party wishes to be made part of the record, they need to be identified, and at the conclusion of the hearing, a copy left with the clerk. Applicant, you go first, indicating the relief that you're seeking from the commission.
Good evening, commission. My name is Beatrice Hernandez, MSA Architects, 7695 Southwest 104th Street, Miami, Florida. And before we start our brief presentation tonight, I know it's been a bit of a long evening, we'd like to first say what, what a collaborative effort this has been between staff and the development team and the project we're going to present to you today is a really, what we believe is a really beautiful result of that effort. So with that being said, I'd like to just start a little bit about showing you the, the exterior of our building, the, kind of the concept of the exterior, and then briefly walk you through the site plan, and then open it up to any comments or questions you may have about the site plan. So what you see here before you today is the intersection of Federal Highway and Ocean Avenue. What we're proposing here is a series of plaza, public plazas. We have, with residential overlooking these plazas. So the project actually is comprised of, as we have stated before, 341 residential units with approximately 20,000 square feet of commercial, retail, and office space. We take up an entire city block. We've actually presented the plan to line the entire development or facing the street with residential units, opening up to the sidewalk with private porches, and what we like to call eyes on the street. On the north side becomes the more kind of public aspect of the project, which is what you're seeing here in this rendering, is the, is the retail component with the public kind of plaza elements that provides kind of breakout space for the retail. We're also proposing an art element, an art sculptural element that, that will be, we're working with a local, or with, not with a local artist, but with an artist, to propose a really kind of a beautiful sculpture that could provide almost a gateway into the community here. We have, if you could go to the next slide, we'll show you kind of the concept.
From there, we have an art commission in here, but then I said, are you working with them?
I think we're, we're working with various.
Okay.
Staff, yeah, on, on this, and we've just started that process. This is just kind of a placeholder for what we're envisioning for the space, but it's, it's going to be a grand type of sculptural element that, that will really define kind of the entrance into the community here, coming from the east. So the next slide that you see here is, if you could go to the rendering of the residential. This shows you the more kind of residential component, which is more mid-block along Federal Highway, it becomes kind of what we call our urban court. It becomes the resident and visitor drop-off and pickup area, becomes the main entry for pedestrians and, and future tenant lease, lease, leasey-lussies that are coming to, to the building to, to rent there. The main amenity space is located right there in the kind of the, the middle part of our block. As you can see, we have those porches that are kind of connected to the building. Residents can come in and out to the sidewalk directly from their units, as well as from within the building as well. So we're really trying to activate the entire city block with, with pedestrian connectivity to the units, to the retail, and, and throughout to the rest of, rest of the community as well. As you can see, it's a very elegant design. We've considered it to be somewhat timeless in its style, and really crisp kind of clean lines. So if we go back to the site plan, I can walk you through a little bit about the, the kind of the elements that are there. And as I mentioned before, on the north side, we have the, the retail, commercial component. On the second level, we're proposing on the northwest side, right, I believe? Excuse me, I'm not so great with north and south these days, the office component, which is approximately about 7,000 or so square feet, that's happening on the second level overlooking the plaza elements. And then over that, on top of there, we have the residential. So we have kind of a stack-to-fed of residential and commercial space on the north side. As you move more towards the south, it becomes more residential and feel. Again, like I mentioned, you can see in the site plan, I'm going to just turn a little bit so I can look, you could see the, what you see in kind of the yellow color is all the residential units that are facing the street, as well as inward towards where we're creating more kind of passive and active courtyards. In one courtyard, we have our pool amenity space, and in another, it's a more kind of what we call a meditation, a yoga garden. It becomes kind of a very nice space for residents that are internalizing these courtyards to look out towards. We provided the, the parking structure off the, kind of off of Federal Highway on north, on southeast Fourth, I believe, yes. And we've also provided surface parking for the retail, so provide ease of access for any people that are coming to the retail space to park directly behind the retail and connect straight into, into the retail spaces. And we provided kind of three ways of entry at each end of the block, and at the mid, midpoint of the retail spaces. You can see through a breezeway that connects towards the middle into one of those central plazas that we've, we've proposed for the project. We feel it's a very kind of active project. There's a lot happening, and we're very excited for you all to, to approve it tonight. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
I have just a couple. The, on page, under amenities, in page 300 of the backup, says developer will be working with Palm Trant of Palm Beach County to determine if transit shelter is needed at this property. If it's determined that one is needed, the shelter will be designed utilizing some of the architectural characteristics of the mix. I happen to know that Palm Trant does want a bus shelter there, and I, would be one of my conditions of approval that it's provided. Are you, you know, you're saying you're talking to them, are you going to do the bus shelter? I'd want that as a condition.
Yes, yes, we are. In fact, since we were last here in front of you, we've been in communication with them, and then we've provided them three solutions, or they provided us actually, three potential solutions for locations along Federal Highway where we're going to be providing those bus shelters. So we fully intend to, to accommodate Palm Tram in, in providing the shelter.
Okay, thanks. I want to make sure that's one of the conditions of approval.
Absolutely.
Also, in the, want to talk about parking, you talked about 10 parallel spots along Federal Highway. Will the bus shelter limit some of those spots?
If you could go to the site plan, Tom, so we can talk about that briefly. What we're, and I apologize for not bringing the diagram because it was very, very schematic in nature, but what we're anticipating is on the south side, maintaining those, those parallel spots, and what we're looking at with Palm Trant is locating, if I could walk over to the. Locating that stop along this area. If we were to lose any potential parking, it may just be this one parallel space.
That's Federal Highway there, where you're pointing out, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, very good. Others? Vice Mayor?
The, the parking garage, are there going to be any dedicated spots there for the public, or is that all residence, is that all for just the residents?
There's a portion of the ground floor that is allocated for retail, and it comes in off the surface parking lot, so as you come in, you turn right into the parking garage. But it is bifurcated or separated from the residential parking garage and the retail so, but there is assigned retail parking.
Yeah, and there, and I, as I read there, there really, the residential parking is not gated until the second floor.
That's correct.
So there'd be first and second.
Right.
Yes?
I got a couple of questions. The, the list of parking spaces and stuff is, are you counting the ones that are already there on, on Ocean Avenue, or, you know, there's already parking spaces there, so when you say there's going to be parking space on Ocean Avenue, is that a net new spaces, or, or, or is, you know, is that minus the ones that are already there? I don't know if I made sense.
I think I know what you're asking. The, the parking breakdown that we provided in our project information, none of the on-street parking, whether it's existing or proposed, outside of our property is counting towards the parking that we're providing or required by the project development. Anything outside of that is essentially superfluous or extra, and it creates a more kind of urban environment for us, which is why we proposed parallel parking along Federal and maintaining the parallel spaces that are on Ocean right now. I think we're losing only one along Ocean purely because fire required it for staging purposes and firefighting.
Okay.
I think, I think they're providing like 47 more than, than were being required by.
Well, that's what I was curious, was it 47 more, or was it minus the ones that are already there?
Yes, we're not, we're not counting any of the parallel on-street parking as, as part of our parking requirement.
Okay.
Or count, for that matter.
Occasionally, a couple of times a year, maybe, hopefully more, is that block on Ocean Avenue gets blocked off for, for events, like Pirate Fest and stuff like that. And personally, I prefer seeing that the curb between the road and the, and the sidewalk be more of an angled, or, or instead of a 7-inch curb, similar to what's in front of Target or in Las Fontanas. I have, I took a picture of Las Fontanas, so that there'd be an easier flow, you know, when you set it up and people are actually walking through the streets, so it'd be more feel, you know, more of a courtyard or, or plaza feel to it with the, you know, I don't, might have to rent it by staff, but I, you know, that's what I'd be looking for.
Are you referring to the intersections?
No, the, the, the whole length of Ocean from, what is it, Federal to?
Southeast Fourth?
Southwest Fourth Street, yeah.
Southeast Fourth. May we?
My name is Tom Hayden, I am with La Sussy Development, I'm the development director. My address is 302 Salvador Square, Winter Park, Florida. And I think that question would have to be answered in collaboration with the city staff. I mean, we want, we want all of our residents to be as safe as possible, and my immediate concern to that would be, it would allow for cars, when we don't have a public event, to easily get on the sidewalk unless we had some kind of protection from that. So I think that's something we would have to talk about in response to that question.
And if I could further to that, some of the, those safety concerns are mitigated by the street parking that we do have there. I mean, so if the street were to be blocked off, no cars would be kind of driving through, and if, when they were, I mean, I think what we're doing is we're designing to the engineering standards of, and we've worked very closely with staff on, on detailing curbs, everything. So we feel very comfortable that we've provided a very safe solution.
That said, I like the, being able to traverse across there very nicely.
Because some of us in the long run would like to see Ocean be more of pedestrian-friendly area.
Yeah, we don't disagree.
But that's the city attorney. Before we do an approval of the site plan, is this the time to bring up any, any thoughts about financing?
No, sir, it's not, not at the rezoning step.
Not the rezoning, but how about site plan?
You could ask whatever questions you like, but.
Okay.
The elements for determining whether it's appropriate for rezoning are separate from that.
Okay. Well, I'm, I guess, I think, maybe I know it's come up before, and we said we would be bringing this up, we told you last time you were here when we tabled it, that we kind of know what you're asking for as far as financing.
At this point, we're continuing our discussions with the CRA, and we have not, we have not reached an agreement with the CRA, but we will continue to visit with them in the hopes of achieving an agreement that is satisfactory to all parties.
Okay, then, I just want to ask the attorney, if we approve this tonight, that, will we still be all right if we can come to agreement on financing, that we'd have another, we can make another decision?
No, the property will be deemed rezoned upon approval, so.
Rezoned.
The condition regarding financing that I think you're speaking about would not be a condition of the rezoning. Once approved, it's rezoned.
Okay, I understand that, yes, but then about the site plan, I guess I'm asking, suppose they come back and we don't agree to the financial arrangements, do we have another chance to, to deny the project?
I don't think there's any financing request before the commission. It's an issue before the CRA.
Right.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
So.
Well, I, I understand that, and I guess I'm asking.
Are we tied down?
Are we tied down if we vote tonight, or could we, we have another bite at the apple here if we don't agree with the final?
Do not have another bite at the apple.
Well, Mike, Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I think what the mayor's asking is proper, I, I just think it's, let's simplify it by just saying that we're agreeing to this, the agreement between the CRA, which we're on the board, too, will have a vote, and then it comes back to us for the final vote, correct?
No. The financing element of what you're discussing is not, is not an element of the consideration for rezoning.
So it's just the CRA.
It's a separate and distinct issue by a separate agency.
And Mayor, if I may add, you know, this, this project is no different than other projects that come before the commission, that once you get a site plan or approval, yet once the rezoning is approved, it's in place. It can be rezoned back later, if that's something you chose to do, but the site plan is good.
18 months, right?
And we, we've done, you know, had many site plans in the city that when the economic downturn occurred, the projects just didn't get built. The site plan is alive for a certain period of time, and then it expires, and then if the developer, right, so if the developer wanted to keep that alive, they'd come back and re, and apply for an extension, but it's, it's really no different at this point in terms of the, the process of, of any other project in the city. The financing does not tie to your approval here.
So we're safe to vote yes?
Well, that, you see, I don't quite understand that, because I'm being told I don't get another bite at the apple, and I'm not sure that I, I, you just said that the CRA and them are not in agreement on the financing, and I don't want to prove this and then I'd be locked in, and if I don't like the financing.
Then your option is to entertain a motion to table.
Okay.
Good evening, Nancy Byrne, Director of Development. I just want to clarify for you, Mayor, that financing would never come into discussion with the commission on a land use rezoning and site plan. That's not what the city commission has purview over when they are looking at the land development regulations. You can certainly ask the developer all the questions you want about financing, but what is in front of you tonight is whether or not you want to rezone and change the land use and approve a site plan, which is, that is what is in front of you. That's what you, as the commission, are examining. Whether or not the CRA comes to agreement with the developer on financing is totally unrelated to the actions that you are taking tonight. If the developer is not able for some reason to financially construct the project, you now have a shovel-ready site, and, and the developer can market this site approval, rezoning, and land use. So it, it's no different than any other land use rezoning site plan you would do in the city. You really don't ever have the, the ability to make a condition of approval that says you must obtain financing to build the project. Jim, do you want to?
I don't think the mayor was asking if it could be a condition of approval. I think he's concerned about the timing and the knowledge that he wants to have before he acts on the ordinance and the new site plans before them on the next item. And my point is, is that the commission still reserves the right to table this matter if they want to.
I'm, I guess I'm concerned about approving the site plan and the rezoning. I, I don't have a problem with it. The problem I have is that I don't know if they're going to financially come to what our agreement that we have on this financially. Vice Mayor?
To simplify this a little bit, if this project, for whatever reason, doesn't come out of the ground, we could always rezone that land back to whatever we need to rezone it back, correct?
It expires in 18 months?
In 18 months, it expires, and we can rezone that back to anything. That's all we're doing.
You can, right.
Like we did, like we did over the old high school, similar to that. We just went back to the, reverted back to the old zone.
You can revert it back, exactly.
Okay, so it's simple as that. Thank you.
I just want to clear, so where I'm understanding what you're saying is, is if they want to, they put all this work into it up to this point, and if they don't have the financing, and they could go out and find another partner, or another, enter the all together and sell them these plans, and, and the zoning say, this is a project you can build right now, start whenever you want.
Happens all the time.
It doesn't really remember, really matter who's the principals behind it.
Exactly. It happens all the time.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve?
You want to, you want to, we need to do each one individually?
It's a public hearing, so.
Oh, public, anybody, public was to address this issue.
And, and there's been no comment with respect to the initial 75 conditions of employment on the site plan, plus the one, Mayor, that you added the 76th. So is the applicant in favor of those?
Are you in favor of the conditions of approval?
Number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-eight had been further discussed with city staff, and we've reached an agreement on amending those three conditions of approval.
For the record for the citizens, tell them what twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-eight is, please.
Number twenty-four, and twenty-five, and twenty-eight are relative to the trees currently existing on the property.
I thought that was pretty much, where are those trees? I thought it was completely bulldozed.
That the trees would be bulldozed?
I, I thought, I didn't know there's forty-eight existing trees still on the site. It looks to me like overgrown grass.
Well, no, there's forty-eight trees on the site.
I'm surprised.
Well, and, and what this addresses is us bringing on board a tree consultant to determine the health of those trees. And once we determine the health, best option relative to the safety of those trees. If we can save them, we can save them. We can replant them later on the site, or we can remove them to a location that the city prescribes for us.
Has staff prepared new conditions of approval that reflect those discussions? Because we either need to have those made part of the record or read into the record.
Yes, Mike, Rob, Planning and Zoning Director. Time is correct. We've worked together to arrive at the modifications of twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-eight. Twenty-eight is being omitted. Twenty-four and twenty-five are being modified. I have a copy I can read into the record or submit for.
Why don't we do both to make sure the record's clear on it, please?
Sure. Number twenty-four, words are inserted after the first sentence, which read, "Owners will engage a tree consultant to evaluate the health of the trees," period. Inserting, "Based upon the results," and that picks up with the existing sentence as it reads now. Number twenty-five?
Mike, could you just hang a second and the commission could follow along as you do that, please?
Sure. The reason, while he's doing that, the reason for these last-minute changes was not necessarily any new information by the applicant, but comments from the applicant's landscape architect, which were late in coming. So over the past couple of weeks, our staff has worked with landscape architect and Tom, representative for the project, to arrive at these minor changes. Next, number twenty-five, inserting the words at the beginning, which read, "Subject to the results of the tree consultant report, the," and it picks up the existing wording, "the twenty-nine existing coconut palm, four Royal Palms, four Foxstill Palms, two Washington Palms, one European Fan Palm, one Pygmy Date Palm should be," inserting the words, "either removed or," an existing wording, "relocated to green spaces on the site." Down toward the bottom, you'll see again the words, "inserted either removed or," again, "relocated to green spaces on-site or coordinated with the city to be relocated off-site to a public property." Last sentence is added, "If relocated to public property, city will assume responsibility for maintenance of the trees, subject to city codes." And as indicated, number twenty-eight is being omitted, not requiring the silva cell process, but relying upon clean fill to be used in the tree planting areas.
Staff is, staff is okay with these changes?
We assisted in the redrafting of these, yes.
What's the commission's desire? Are you okay with the changes? Twenty-four, twenty-five, okay. We're okay with the changes to those, I guess. Did you have something else, staff?
It's clarifying that these are part of the site plan conditions. So when you move, not the rezoning, but the site.
Okay. Okay, anybody else in the, anybody else in the public? Seeing none? Is there a motion on proposed ordinance number fourteen zero zero six, which is the rezoning?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casella?
Yes.
Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Okay, approve the request for new site plan, item B.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion?
Mayor, the motion needs to include the conditions of approval, plus the one that you added.
Motion to include the conditions.
And the, and the changes to the
And the changes.
Okay. A motion is second. Anybody else in the public? Seeing none, please, just not, just need a roll call, too? Is that part of the ordinance?
No roll call, this is on the site plan. Just a motion.
Okay, motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Good luck. Hope we can get it billed. City managers report, accept the links of Boynton Beach Golf Course five-year strategic plan as presented by Ron Tapper, Golf Course Manager.
Good evening, good evening, Commissioner, Mayor, Vice Mayor, everybody on board. Have a little presentation here for you that we did for the golf advisory board. First, we submitted our five-year plan. You should all have that. And I'd like to do a little presentation of where we've been in the last nine months from September with our new superintendent on board. And the first thing you're looking at here on the golf course is we added flowers everywhere around, so anything around the clubhouse is flowers. These have all been replaced now with summer annuals, and we've added more. And this is our start, so where you start and arrive, you're going to start seeing color on the golf course, which wasn't there before. We have a new flag out front with our Lynx logo, flying proud when the wind blows. The American flag that was out front now is in front of the, our clubhouse, which you'll see on the pictures coming up. All the Ts, when you drive up to the golf course, when you're starting off or finishing, every tee box now with the ball washers and the granite signs are all flowered and mulched and nice starting points when you start off in every hole. And the reception on that has been excellent for the customer comeback. New fairway markers put in on the grounds, one hundred, one fifty, two hundred, two fifties. The, on the site there on the right, you'll see it says no more pin zones. Actually, as of yesterday, we've taken that out because as of yesterday, the GPS units that you all approved is put on the golf cart yesterday, and customer response is about ninety percent favorable so far. And that is, that notice doesn't have to be there anymore because now you all have GPSs that shows everybody where they're going. Top-of-the-line, state-of-the-art GPSs. This is during the season here. We have target greens that we added, and can't do this during the summertime because of all the rain. But we are looking to address, to have a target green all year round by either elevating some Ts on the range. It's very popular to have targets out there, and we're looking to make it so we can do something year-round. This is during the season here, when, get out of the rainy season. On the left, you see eight, eight-and-a-half-year-old club cart carts that are leaving the golf carts, excuse, leaving the golf course. On the right, we have a fleet of eighty-five brand-new Yamahas that have been replaced. No more batteries falling out of carts and carts, no more carts. We're in a process now, and all the carts that you see there, we're not going to have that situation anymore because the carts on the right, we are in our budget now, and every four years, we're replacing carts. So we're not going to go into that situation where you see eight-year-old golf carts, which some courses are still in that predicament. On the left, you see a lot of the stuff that we're doing now. We're renovating a lot of our bunkers, re-edging, taking some of the bunkers back to the original area where they are. To give you an example, where the gentleman on the right is edging, that bunker that he's edging, and when we catch up, which we can't do at this time, but when we do catch up, where you see the grass behind him, that little bit of that hill is actually supposed to be part of the bunker. So that's the way the course was originally designed that was let go, and we are going to eventually take all these bunkers back to the original design of the Bruce Levin Von Hagey design of the golf course that was done in eighty-four. That on the left is what our lakes used to look like a year ago. That's our twelfth hole. And what you see on the right is from spraying, taking over. That's a picture from our eighth green, looking back to our sixth hole, after cleaning up, spraying our lakes, taking care of the stuff. That's how it's supposed to look. That's more customer-friendly, more, brings out more business. That's the aesthetics look of the golf course improving. What you see on the left is before picture of a year, actually less than a year. That's how high this stuff used to be. It used to be in some areas even a foot higher than that that was let go from lack of maintenance, lack of funding, just letting go, trying to go through the last eight years of trying to cut costs. Doesn't help. What you see on the right is we're taking action. We're taking it down with the approval of the Audubon Society, and we are still being certified, and we're within our boundaries, so we're, we're very native-friendly. This is the lake masters that we had to hire, that you see on the left, spraying our lakes to do away with all the stuff that you see, the grass and the weeds that were growing across our lakes, and the same picture on the right. The pictures that you see right now, we do this ourselves now. We no longer have to pay for this. The guys are, we have our own aquatics guys, our superintendent went out and do it now. Our guys are spraying our own lakes now. That's no more a cost to the city for us, I mean, not for the city, but for the golf course. We do this ourselves now. What you see on the left and the right is how high this stuff used to be and covering our lakes. Some of the lakes were covered, you couldn't even see them. You could almost walk across it before. Again, before the lake banks, afterwards, you see the manicured lake banks when we go in there and edge them. The clubhouse on the left with our flag blowing of all the flowers. If you notice the trees, I've been there, I'm in my fourteenth year, and you can see on the right, that's a picture of our cart barn where they did the tree trimming. Thank you to the city to bring it out to trucks and the Chris for trimming. It's a big job. This is the first time since I've been there, all them trees have been trimmed, stuff, nothing hanging on the clubhouse anymore or the cart barn, and it's a lot better, especially after the storm that we just had Friday out there. It's nice to know nothing was touching the building. Which, and just so you all know, Friday afternoon, we had a, between eleven, eleven-thirty and one o'clock, had two and a half inches of rain, but during that time, it's probably one of the scariest storms I've seen in that little hour and a half time there. And we had four trees on the golf course hit by lightning, and one of them's like, one was in front of the building here, and one was on the other side, a huge queen palm. So we had to destroy one, but we're getting trees going like crazy here. What you're seeing here is some of the dead trees that we've taken out on the right that have been, on the golf course, have been there for years. Now we're taking, removing these trees. On the left is a picture of our eleventh hole. When Chris came out from the city, we, the trees that were on the left on the teeing ground, were actually blocking the fairway. You couldn't even hit a five-yard, ten-yard width shot. It's okay for Vice Mayor Casella because he's right down the middle. But now you got an open shot there. It looks very pretty teeing off there now. We didn't shave the ones on the right there because they're put there for protection between two holes there, so it's, we have to watch what we do there for protection between holes. Yes, we are Audubon-friendly. And the picture you see on the bottom left is a very picturesque place. You really can't see too much from here, but if you play the first hole of the family golf course or the seventh hole, which borders that, that's called Bird Island, and you'll see all kinds of nesting and anything from alligators to iguanas to storks to egrets to anhingas, you name it, they're on there. And to give you a little impression about that, he's sitting in the audience now, but when Vice Mayor Hay, former Vice Mayor Hay, retired, he came out to the golf course for a little meeting, meet and greet, and we took him for a little tour. I think he was quite impressed with that picture of the island out there, as are a lot of other people. And I welcome everybody on the commission, the mayor, anybody, to come on out, just call me, and I'll give you a tour and see the improving conditions at the golf course. If you haven't been there, if you just come out today, you won't know where it was nine months ago, as the vice mayor does. But if you come out daily, you would see the improvements from where it was nine months ago to where we are now. One of the biggest tournaments we do all year is our Play for Pink Tournament for Breast Cancer Society. And we run over a hundred thousand dollars in contributions from this year over, including this year, that's gone for the last twelve years. This year is about eighty-five, ninety women, which the vice mayor contributed volunteer when he was there, along with our public relations, Eleanor Kressel. One of our big tournaments was the South Florida PGA Senior, PGA Senior-Junior Pro-Pro, which had a hundred and eighteen participants this year. Probably one of their biggest chapter in Southeast Florida tournaments. They don't play here for, the golf course is in shape for them. It looks, it looked great and it played great. This is ladies' club that represents the Lynx of Boynton Beach, who travels around, that plays different, matches against different clubs. They represent us proudly. They have their own uniforms, which they picked up. The team from last year, won the Palm Beach County Inner Club for the last three years, which our vice mayor is on. They actually played the day down at South Winds, and I'm very proud of the guys. I went down there to help with the scoring and give support, and I thank these guys for what they do. And just so you all know, they, that trophy there, everybody tries to change the rules every year because they're trying for that trophy, but our guys, it's a tough one this year, but I want to give them credit for the last three years because they, they held us proud. Before I, before I get into this one, this is our golf course comparison. I just want to say there's two pictures that aren't on there. And if anybody goes onto the Lynx of Boynton Beach Facebook, there's two pictures that have been put on there recently. One of them is Rick Novak, one of our assistants. We have a golf traveling team, a little junior traveling team with the uniforms, and they're five, five to fifteen years old, and they travel around. And just, we just got the picture. I didn't get a chance to put it on there, but yes, we're represented with our own junior thing who travels, and Rick Novak himself takes that on upon himself. And if you ever get a chance at the golf course, you could thank him. He does a lot of the juniors. And the other one of the staff, don't come to my mind right away, but it's, I'll get back to that. The golf rate, this is a comparison. We're looking to increase our prices to make our, to make our, our budget. And what we did is a course comparison, and myself and the administrative staff went around and we did comparisons of all the golf courses in our area that we compete against, public golf courses, and we did comparisons. No, we're not the highest. No, we're not the lowest. But for our value, for what we do, we're in the middle. And if any questions on that, you guys can get into that with me. Yes, sir, Mr. McCray.
Questions? Well, I, since you asked for a question, let me go ahead. How are we marketing, you know, this on golf course? I'm just saying, besides, you said Facebook. I'm just saying, brochures, anything? If so, I need to see one. I'm, what are we doing? Marketing strategy?
Our adverts, this is part of our reason why we're looking for increases. We only have a ten thousand dollar advertising budget. We, Facebook is one, word of mouth is one. We are out, we are getting out and about. We advertise on our own carts. We track what goes on. We do run ads, we do coupons. So we're out there, we go out, we put things out in the paper to twenty thousand residents. We target different areas. We are on the golf channel. But we don't do third parties, like reservation systems, to give you an example, like a GolfNow or Groupon. We are not going to devalueize the golf course. The golf course holds its own. So what I mean by that, I had a little talk with the vice mayor, we were talking about this, where, and we're, the golf course holds its own for this value. The aesthetic value of the golf course improving brings in the people.
Vice Mayor plays golf. I'm not trying to be funny. I don't play golf. Okay, I don't see the point me hitting the ball like I had to go and get it. That's me.
Yes.
Okay, I don't do that. I'm still trying to figure out, do you have any brochures for advertisement or something? And I can see one. I'm just saying.
Yes, we do. Yes, I do. I don't have it with me. I would bring you one.
No, I'm not a style golf.
Yes, we do. I would bring you one personally, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're really not that old, you know.
Did you want to continue?
Yes. If there's any questions on the sheet here, what we have here, before I get into the, on the comparisons?
I can't. I don't want to take time, read all that. I just want to ask you, if I came out tomorrow before eleven-thirty and wanted to play eighteen holes, what does it cost me?
Thirty-one dollars.
Thirty-one? Okay, thank you.
Ron, just real quickly, when was the last time our rates actually went up?
Their actual green fees probably about two thousand Their actual green fees, probably about 2008, 2009.
Any other questions?
Questions on things in general or just...
Go ahead. Whatever question.
Well, I'd just like to point out, my understanding is you referenced Audubon, but that's, that's not National Audubon Society. I believe that's a company that, that's kind of playing off the Audubon, National Audubon's name using that, that they're, they're not really an environmental group. What?
We are, we are certified Audubon.
Certified National Audubon Society.
Is it?
Yes.
I don't, I, I'll check into that. I don't think, I think they're two different organizations. I don't think National Audubon Society gets into certifying. I think it's a separate company. And, and then also I'd like to see down the road is, I don't know if it's on your property or in the background, but there's a lot of Australian pines and that over the time, if they could be maybe phased out into oaks or southern yellow pond or something.
Yes, sir. We're looking into that. Right now, some of the trees that are there, we can't touch because they're there for protection in between holes. So, because we have a lot of adjoining fairways and we don't want golfers hitting into somebody right now.
Right.
We are looking into native trees. One of the things, we've lost a lot of trees over the years from previous hurricanes. And we're working with Debbie Majors for working on grants to replace some of the trees, to get a grant for beautification and help maybe get a lot of the trees. I was just saying, this last Friday, we had four trees hit by lightning in an hour. And that was very close.
And the other thing I noticed is iguanas aren't really part of South Florida either. But other than that, I defer to the golf pros on the Commission.
There's, anybody in the public wish to address this item? Seeing none? Proposed Resolution 14057, approved rate increases for cart and green fees, annual permits, Lynx club cards, and fees for other optional services at the Lynx of Boynton Beach Golf Course. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any other discussion?
I just, real quickly, Mr. Mayor, I, obviously, I play, I spend a lot of time at the Lynx playing golf since I've moved here. And since Ron Tapper and his staff has taken over, there's been a transformation from unbelievable to believable. It's, it's, it's one of the nicest courses around. I play a lot of different courses in the area, as you can imagine. And I think that, you know, our course, it's a, it's an asset. It's an amenity we have here in the city, right here in the city of Boynton Beach, just like our, just like our oceanfront beach down here. The golf course, people move to Florida for reasons of weather, beach, and golf. Those are three main reasons that I've, that I know of. And we've got to do everything we can to help. It's a enterprise account that the golf course runs on, which means it gives money back into our general budget, which we disperse. When, when we give raises or such, the golf course employees, that has to come out of the golf course budget. The city doesn't pay for that. It comes out of their budget, which reduces their capital to help pay for fertilizers that have been going out of sight. The equipment is, is old. So come budget time, I'd like to have the discussion of, you know, what we can, you know, put into the golf course to help Ron and the staff out there to keep it in the golf digest as one of the, one of, excuse me, as the best public golf course in South Florida. That's, that's quite a finding. And I think that at budget time, that we'll have that discussion.
Mr. Merker?
I've had the opportunity to play there. It is a beautiful course. It is run nicely, simply to the point. Let's keep it that way. And I agree.
Have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Proposed Ordinance Number 14009 on second reading in public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
An ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations to modify the minimum floor area ratio for projects owned mixed-use high, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
This proposed ordinance, 14009, on second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion is second. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to address this issue? Seeing none? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick? Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Proposed Ordinance Number 14010 on second reading, public hearing, approve the removal of garage sale permit requirements.
An ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the removal of garage sale permit requirements for, from the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13, Article 2, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Anybody in the public wish to address this ordinance? Hearing none? Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Casello?
Aye.
Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
The vote is 5-0.
Vice Mayor, you wanted to talk about IMC on the future agenda?
Yeah. Real quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. 14C, I don't want a received report. I want the lobbyists to come here before the Commission and let us know what's happening up there in Tallahassee and what he's doing for us here in Boynton Beach. I've never met the gentleman. He could be here tonight. I wouldn't know it. I don't want him...
He's scheduled to come.
Is he going to come physically?
Yeah, they're going to, they're coming in person. And we have a new representative that you will be meeting next week.
Maybe we could do that more, you know, maybe a couple of times a year, maybe quarterly, something on that idea, just to give us a heads up what he's actually doing up there.
Absolutely. We can have that discussion and anything the Commission, you know, desires, we can build into the contract.
Because I don't know the gentleman and I'd at least like to meet him.
Okay.
Come and meet personally. You can tell him when you want.
I will, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Anything else to come forward to the Commission? Stand adjourned.